Make sure.
Recording.
Okay, we are now recording. Welcome everyone to the October 20th, 2020 Building Committee Meeting. It's good to see you all. I wish it were in person, but our last meeting was March 4th, 2020. And times are really different. We've discovered that our buildings were not made to meet the demands of COVID-19. And they're really holding us back from getting more of our students back into our classrooms in person. So there really is a new urgency to our charge and the Building Committee charge is to review the needs of the assessment report, determine priorities, determine the size and scope of a future building project and bond, and then make a recommendation to the school board. Normally, we would do, normally, we would do introductions, but we have so many people and it would be really hard to do that. So names are up on the boxes and we won't take the time to do introductions tonight. So Heather, do you want to do the review of the strategic plan? I'll take over letting people in.
Yes, and I misplaced Michael. I left him downstairs quickly. So my apology for that. Did you want me to go over the goals, Donna? Is that the plan?
Yeah.
Okay, any 30 seconds. I left him downstairs.
Okay. I'll read the first one while she's gone. Health and well-being. Our schools will provide a supportive learning environment in which physical, social, and emotional well-being are valued and promoted. And these are the district goals as developed by the Cape Elizabeth School Department, School Board for the strategic 2020 through 2025 strategic plan. And these were developed and approved on September 25th, 2019. So Heather, are you back? So I read health and well-being.
Okay. I'm still trying to find him. Why don't you just keep going if you have him in front of you? I can't find him.
Competency. Our students will be personally responsible, aware, empathetic, and engaged local and global citizens. Multiple pathways and definitions of success. Our schools will value, promote, and celebrate multiple pathways and definitions of success. Safe, sustainable, and effective facilities. Our schools will be safe and effective facilities. They will be updated and maintained to meet the needs of students and staff in accordance with long-term financial planning. And the last one is environmental responsibility. The school department will prioritize environmental responsibility, including stewardship and sustainability.
Okay. Great. Donna, we have a question coming in that usually whenever we have a meeting, we have the opportunity for public comments. Do we want to do that right now? Quickly, it's not on the agenda, but I think it's important to hear from the public. Is that okay?
That's fine with me as long as we can get to our agenda.
Yeah, I'll keep track of the time. So if there's any comments from the public, just go ahead and raise your hand. Okay, I am not seeing any. Oh, I see John Foltz. He's raising his physical hand. Go ahead, John. You're on mute, so you have to unmute yourself, John.
There we go. Thank you. So, yes, I don't mean to be extensive. I just wanted to comment on some of the materials that were presented for the meeting specifically with regards to the enrollment forecast. I was glad to see that those were done. I would note that there are a couple of things about the enrollment forecasts and having looked at the numbers very carefully myself in the past. If you look at what the shape of the class growth has been over the last 20-plus years, you'll see that class sizes tend to grow about, on average, about 20, 25 students between kindergarten and fourth grade, and then declines about around four students or so between eighth grade and 12th grade. And I'm looking at the forecasts for the flat growth of the, or mostly flat growth of the enrollment. And I think they're actually underestimating the initial growth in the class sizes and then underestimating a little bit because it tends to be a little bit of decline in the high school years. So I just wanted to note that I have the data. I'm happy to provide that to folks. I would also note, we should expect a drop in enrollment in about four years because we're going to have an economic downturn and that's going to likely affect birth rates. And countervailing that, we may see an increase in population as people are leaving urban areas to more rural areas like this one. So in the long run, though, when you're looking at the facilities, we've got a couple of large factors that could have the population go up a fair bit and down a fair bit from the steady numbers where we've been at. We really ought to be thinking about, as we build out our facilities, getting an estimate of that population that's not just a point estimate, but really is an estimate of what's the range. Because the cost of not handling what your expected range is, is actually what gets expensive. If you're too big or too small for the expected level of changes that you've got. So I would just urge another very hard look at what the expected enrollment is, particularly in light of the growth that this region and Cumberland County and rural areas are experiencing today. That's all. Thank you.
All right. Thanks, John. So moving on to the agenda. Unless there's other hands raised. I didn't see any. And so we're on to number four. Do you want to go ahead, Donna? Report on facilities work completed? I guess it's Perry.
Yes, Perry was going to do some, obviously, some work has been done on our building since March. We've had the revolving renovation grant going. We've had a lighting project going. We had some ventilation work done. So Perry, I'm gonna, Perry's been busy. I'm going to turn it over to you.
I'm going to try to share my screen. It wouldn't let me log in as an administrator earlier.
Okay, wait a minute. I have to let you. Okay, you should be able to share now.
All right, let me take a look here. It's nothing, nothing real exciting. It's more, you can just read along with me. Can everybody see that?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, so at the high school, some of this has been projects that have come up throughout the summer, whether it be like emergency style projects, some of these are CIP. It's really a mix, but this is a general where we are today. We did a continued window replacement and wall repair in seven classrooms at the high school. We installed new carpet and cove base in the occupational therapist workspace. We are in the process, it's ongoing, with installing a new phone server, a new system server in the high school. We completed a main LED lighting project, which was just about 500 fixtures throughout the high school. Reinstated an existing ventilation exhaust system along with adding 14 diffusers in the hallways. Upgraded to the public address system as part as the SRF funding. We are in the process of upgrading our HVAC automation control front end, which is basically just, it's not a lot of mechanical moving parts. It's more of just a computer and of the automation control system. But it is big in allowing us to make changes within the system accurately and timely. Temporary wall built for the main office to accommodate an extra space for the school nurse due to the COVID addition. Let's see, addition of multiple plexiglass barriers. Hand sanitized dispensers in every classroom and installation of hallway CO2 monitors. That right now is just at the high school. We may be tackling some in Pond Cove in the middle school. I gotta evaluate that yet. In the middle school, we've replaced a six-inch heating valve in the main boiler room. That valve was responsible for a shutdown of the heating system last year as it failed and caused a unit to freeze over our walk-in cooler and flooding a portion of the kitchen. The new bleacher reinforcement installed in the gymnasium, that is basically where the bleachers attach to the wall. Due to an inspection, they had found that the reinforcements that hold the back end of the bleachers was at the end of its life. So they added reinforcement to those bleacher installations. We installed a second sink in the nurses' office in the middle school. We are, we're still in the process of resetting the failing precast window sills. Those were called out in the Colby report because of water infiltration getting into those classroom spaces. Installation of an eight-foot fence around the generator. I'm not sure why I put that in. It was a project we did, but not really in reference to the building. HVAC automation controls, again, it's a front end. That will also, you'll also see it in Pond Cove. It's basically district-wide. We're adding updated controls to the HVAC. And let's see, additional plexiglass barriers as well, hand sanitizing every classroom. And we have just completed on Sunday the replacement of a 50-year-old fire hydrant. I only put that in there because of the age of that hydrant. That hydrant failed. That was a $12,000 job that was unexpected, but we were in a situation where it needed to be done. We weren't able to completely shut off water with it leaving it the way it was. So, and that if, when you, when you shut the water off, I learned this this week, but when you shut the water off in the middle school in Pond Cove, you're also shutting off the water to the fire station and police station. So that needed to be repaired. In Pond Cove, we have an additional office space that was built in a hallway alcove. It's kind of a common theme that we're seeing now with running out of space in our buildings, converting alcoves into offices. A new carpet and cove base installed in the conference room. Again, the HVAC automation controls, plexiglass, and hand sanitizers. In the future, we have a replacement of the middle school walk-in cooler and freezer. That was damaged in a flood last year, so we're just waiting for the final details of that project to get done. And we're looking to schedule that sometime during the holiday break. Boiler room stack repairs at the middle school. That's just replacing some stacks due to moisture damage. Continued security enhancements and the SRF building project will be continued as we move from winter into spring. Did you want me to share? I did do some drawings of the roofing as well, or?
Sure.
Back at our last meeting in March, I was asked about some drawings for the, to be able to show what roofs have been completed recently and which are dated. And to the best documentation I have, these are, these are just pictures, Google pictures. You can find it on Google Maps and investigate it yourself. But this is the middle school area over here.
Wait, Perry, we can't see. We still have your list up.
Let me see if I can back that out. I'm going to bring it back up. Are you able to see it now?
No, you're not sharing your screen right now. You have to go back to, okay, now it says, okay, there you go. We see it.
Thank you. It makes a little more sense now when I'm talking about it. This is the middle school building that we have here. Everything that I have outlined in red with the red striping is a newer roof that has been done. And you can tell just simply by the gray color of the roof. That's basically showing a newer rubber where the black rubber is more of a dated look to it. But yes, anything here in red striping has been replaced. This is the 30s building here. We just did that roof over the summer. That is a shingle roof. The areas here and here and here that are light gray, the only reason they look light gray is because they are, the rooftop is covered with a ballast, which is basically riverstone. It's kind of an older way of doing rooftops. The riverstone holds the rooftop down. So that's why that has a gray look as well, but that is a dated roof. And then down here at Pond Cove, you have the fourth grade, the kindergarten, and kind of the main lobby area have newer roofs. So it's, you know, it's for the most part, I'd say split right down the middle as far as rooftops that have been done and rooftops that still need to be changed out. And then it is the same thing at the high school. You have the math wing, social studies, English area, and the main lobby area have all been done. And then in the industrial arts wing back here, what we call the C-section in the building. Everything else has a dated roof. This portion here does not count as part of the school project only because it is the swimming pool, which is a town-owned building, and that rooftop would come out of town budget. So that is it. Any questions?
Perry, can you, can you, I know we're just in the planning stages, but can you talk a little bit about the next phase here with our federal grant? We just got an additional, a grant for an additional $1 million. And we need to spend a lot of that on, hopefully, on doing some ventilation work. Can you just talk about that a bit?
Sure. When I was notified that we received this extra funding, I, I just, I decided to contact Colby Company and say, you know, you guys have done the report and you know our ventilation system the most. So how can we get the most bang for our buck with those funds? Where can we put the money where we'll do the most good, given the current pandemic? And with that, they came back with the report and then we're looking at, basically, it would be a change out, I believe, of, and James can correct me if I'm wrong, but it's almost every large air handler that we have in all three schools, whether it be an air handler in a mechanical space or a rooftop air handler. All the big units would be getting changed out. Rooftops are a little more simplified because you literally can just, you know, if the, if the units are, for the most part, a direct match, you can pull the old unit off the rooftop with a crane and drop the new one right in place and hook up the plumbing and electric and you're good to go. The, and part of the thing that helps us out as well is our, because of the date, dating of our air handlers, we can only go up to about a MERV 8, which is a rating system they give filtration. And I don't know if anybody else has seen, but they give, the CDC has been giving guidelines and Environmental Protection Agency have been suggesting a MERV 13, which is a higher filtering style filter. Our air handlers currently, most of them currently cannot handle an air filter like that because the units just do not have the power. It would be, it would almost be like putting something solid behind a fan and you defeat the purpose because the air then coming out isn't as strong. With the upgrade of these air handlers, we would then allow to go up to a MERV 13 filter and meet those recommendations set by the guidelines that were given, along with an increased airflow and other things as well. So for an overall project, it's affecting all three schools in large portions of the areas. The high school classrooms, most of them are handled by unit ventilators. But after Jeff, Shad, and myself have done a great bit of studying those classrooms very well and in detail, all those seem to be meeting the guidelines and the recommendations set, actually, from their, the build date. Meeting, meeting the CFM that we need for those spaces. That's it.
Anybody have any questions for Perry? I don't think I can see you all. So if you have a question, just shout it out.
It looks like Tim Thompson has a question, Donna.
Okay, Tim. Well, there's Tim. Okay.
So Donna, so we've got this million-dollar grant to do what Perry has identified with Colby. How much of that million dollars would that, would that take up the bulk of that? I have no idea how much.
Approximately $100,000, $600,000. The kicker is it has to be spent by December 31st.
So has that order been put in place yet?
No. We are working, trying to work fast.
It's a little tricky and we're trying to get creative with how that process can get done. And seeing what Marcy's also working on pulling strings to see what we can do with the state. And if there is any way that we can have those funds either set aside or extended a little bit longer for us. It's happening all across the state.
Well, it's a federal grant and they're setting the guidelines, so there's little to no hope of getting that extended, but we're hoping that we can encumber the amount. It also means most likely that if we can get it up and running, it will have to be done with our students in the building. So that's going to be a little tricky as well, but it's a lot of money and I can't say that we're going to have that much money in the near future to do this project. So we want to get our students and staff back into our school safely and this is a way we can do it. So we're going to try everything we can do to make it happen.
Perry, can I quickly just follow up?
Sure.
So you said something about the ability of taking these new air handlers. And would, did you say something about being able to put them on if we ended up having to build new buildings? Would these air handlers just go in the trash or would we possibly be able to reuse them?
There's always a possibility to reuse them. It's a little too early to tell because a new building or renovation, whatever's decided here, has not been designed yet. So we don't know for sure, but you know, if you have a, if you have a, oh, I'm going to say a five-ton. It's just a size that will give it a five-ton unit sitting on a rooftop. And the design calls for, in a new building or a new renovation, calls for a five-ton unit very similar or the same on the rooftop of the new portion, then yes, you could literally just pull that one off and set it in place on the new building. It's really of, and that's one thing that could be taken into consideration when the design is done as well, using those units and trying to get our most money back on them. But to answer your question, it's too early to say, you know, that they'll all get used, but I'd say we could definitely probably use a good portion of them.
Thanks. I was just wondering if it was even possible.
Yeah, and right now, we have the immediate concern of trying to get the air quality as good as possible to get our students and staff back into our school safely. So we know that if we do any projects, building projects, it'll, it'll be probably a couple of years before it gets on the road. And so between now and then, we, we have to have people back in our school, so. So this is a good chance to do that. Any other questions for Perry? We've learned a lot about ventilation. I guess Lisa has. Okay. So we're going to move on to the enrollment projection. And Marcy and I started looking into this early, soon after our last, our March 4th meeting and looked at a couple of different companies. This was done by the New England School Development Council called NESDEC. And they regularly do enrollment projections for school districts in New England. So this is one of the things that they do. Thank you, John, for talking about this. I'm just, I don't know if you have, I think I'm going to try to share my screen now and pull that up. I'm not sure how large it will come out, so.
Jamie, you have a question? Is it for Perry?
Nope, it's about the enrollment stuff.
Sure, go ahead.
So while you're pulling that up, Donna, I wonder, the information that was included seemed like a lot of raw data, but not necessarily context. And so as you're going through this, I just wondered if there's additional context about what the factors were that led to this data and the methodology and so on?
We had, and Marcy, you might want to chime in on this because I know you were the one, you were the contact with the company, but they asked for a lot of information, which we provided about the district. And then this was the standard projections that they do for New England school districts that ask for it. So Marcy, do you want to talk any about the questions that they asked?
Yes, you're right, Donna. It was comprehensive in the sense that they went with growth in the town, the areas, Jamie. Complete, you know, like I had to get information from the assessors' office. It was a lot of information from the schools. We had to get data, right? Wasn't that right, Donna? Data from, I believe it was 20 years worth of growth data that they were looking at from historical purpose. And I'd had to look back through my emails too to get, to bring up to the top of my mind some of the other things. But it took us quite a while to gather everything together for them.
I don't, I don't mean to put you on the spot and I don't want to derail the conversation, but if any of that's available, I personally would love to take a look at it just to see, again, what the, what the component factors were, if there was any weighting placed on any of those things. And it sounds like it was more than just historical averages overlaid with, with birth rate trends, which is good. But I'd love to see sort of the depth of variables there in particular.
Say that, Jamie. They definitely did more than just laying the live births over the trends.
Right, exactly.
And so particularly anything relating, particularly anything relating to, you know, the composition of the current demographic in town, real estate transactions, and projected sort of market demand for, for property availability, things like that.
Yep, sure. I'll go through my files and do some digging and pull up the work that we had to send to them. And as far as the behind-the-scenes, some of the things, I'd have to actually ask them for what they did and their calculations on their end. So our end will be easy, but I can also ask them as well, Jamie, and get back to you.
Thank you.
Welcome.
So as I said, they, this is something that they do for schools throughout New England. It's a very respected organization that they do a lot of different things for schools. So this is just the historical enrollment, so you can see where we started in 2004, with 1708 students. And last year, and this year, we were, last year, we were up to 1575. Downward trend of minus 7.8%. And an interesting thing about this, and I know this came up in our last meeting as I was listening to it today, with the grade combinations. And so we would look at the K to four and to see what that looked like for Pond Cove, five to eight for the middle school. for the middle school and then nine to twelve for. For the high school. And then they, they gave the data just in bar graph form. The same data. And then these were the projected enrollments. And again. They gave the grade level combinations down here. So you can see what would the needs and changes would be for each of the different schools. Going from the enrollment, going from fifteen point, fifteen seventy five. Into. Two thousand nineteen, twenty to fifteen eighty one projected enrollment for two thousand twenty nine, thirty. I don't know if I can move you all over. And that is projected growth of point four percent. And you have this packet. So let's see if I can move this. Yeah, there we go. And again, in the next pages in bar graph form. This is the historical. Data compared really, but the projected enrollment data. Into two thousand twenty nine. And then this is a sort of comparison of the birth, birth rate, births and the projected kindergarten enrollment. So you can see in two thousand four, those were the students that entered kindergarten in two thousand nine. Using our data to two thousand, those born in two thousand fourteen. Enter kindergarten two thousand nineteen. And then the last page is the projection for. New England as a whole. And as I said, they do this, these projections for. For all the schools and all over New England. So they have data. So it looks like Maine will be, is a minus six percent, so six percent decrease. Although that doesn't show that for our district. So. Does anybody have any comments after looking at this?
Hi, thank you. Um, I think this is sort of the elephant in the room a bit, but. Things have changed in the last six months. And I think, to what extent are we able to take that into account? Because I think we all know that there's, there, there could be a dramatic change in what the projections are for the population in the state or, or the town. So. I don't expect anybody to have an easy answer to that, but it's certainly something we need to keep in mind.
I feel like Hope is making a really good point because, I mean, I'm hearing that real estate's going crazy with people trying to move here and not just Maine, but here. So. We've always been a popular, I like to call us North Connecticut as opposed to Cape Elizabeth, but I think it's getting even more popular. And I don't know how we keep track of that.
Just to follow up, I mean, I, I don't think we can make any projections based on that. But I, I think it would be naive for us not to take it into account and just sort of work with the, with the study because things have obviously changed dramatically.
Other comments?
Jen, I see you raising your hand. And then Mary Ann will take you afterwards.
So I was like. Um, I was just wondering if this, so is this the final enrollment study that we would use to design new school buildings? Or is it, was this just sort of a study to help us inform this decision better?
Well, when we left in March, um, it was requested that we do another study. So this is what, um, that's what we did at the time.
And then I was also just, I mean, it went to twenty twenty nine. That doesn't, are they able to forecast longer? Like that would be like a realistic lifetime of our, our school buildings, of a new school building. Hope, yeah, like thirty.
No, that wouldn't, that wouldn't be the lifetime of the new school building, but that's as far out as they would, they would go at this point. So.
Thanks, Jen. Mary Ann, did you have a hand raised? You have to unmute.
Can you hear me?
Yep.
Great, thank you. So thank you very much for doing this, Donna. I really appreciate it. I was just looking today at your study and then I tried to look and see what else is out there in the universe. And there's actually a Federal Reserve Bank of Boston study for Northern New England that came out in September of this year. And it says that it is projecting that Cumberland County's school age children. The population will drop by sixteen point nine percent between twenty seventeen and twenty thirty. So I think there's a big discrepancy between what the Federal Reserve Bank is looking at and what we're looking at. And I just raise it as a question. And I know also the governor's office had done a study in twenty sixteen and concluded that the numbers were going to go down. So I'm just a little bit concerned, given that we have seen a twenty percent drop in the school population since about two thousand seven to today, that I'm wondering if this is overly optimistic to be projecting an essentially flat population.
Well, this is specific to Cape Elizabeth. So you know, that's, that's about all we can tell you at this point. So you, you know, trying to compare New England as a whole.
Yeah, this was Cumberland County. So I'll send this to you. I, you know, I was just looking at your information today and looking for other information. So I can send you this link because it is for Cumberland County.
How old is that study, Mary Ann?
It was published September fifteenth, twenty twenty.
So that wasn't the twenty sixteen study?
No, there's also a state study that is twenty sixteen, but the Federal Reserve Bank of Boston was September fifteenth, twenty twenty. So I'll send Donna the link tomorrow. Thank you.
So Heather, you were going to go over the, the four options, just to remind us.
Yep. Right. So the engineer and architect company came up with four potential options for us.
I think I can try to pull them up.
And we've already had a lot of discussion about these four options. Next on the agenda is to. You know, to see, is there one that, you know, most people are comfortable taking off and narrowing it down to three options? Or is there, you know, a way to narrow down to option, to two options? That will be the next thing coming through. But. Option one is a phase lower school and middle school building replacement. It's a ten year project. It comes in two phases. Phase one's the new building construction adjacent to the middle school to be temporarily occupied by Pond Cove Elementary School. With the existing cafeteria and gym remaining in place. The Pond Cove Elementary School would be demolished. And the occupation would be twenty twenty three. This estimated phase bond is between thirty three, thirty nine million and forty three million. Phase two. Hello. But phase two would be the, the second new building, the construction of the Pond Cove Elementary School and its current location. A new gym and a new cafeteria would be built in the spare space. Lower school students would occupy the new space. Middle school students would occupy the new phase one school. And occupation would take place in twenty thirty three. This estimation is forty two million to forty six million, which are on the bottom there. So that was option one. Option two is the current lower school and middle school building replacement. So it's the same as option one, but it's over a four year period. And my recollection and going back and reviewing and understanding is that it's the similar idea, but it's just done faster. There's phase one, the occupation would be done by twenty twenty three, but phase two occupation, occupation would be in by twenty twenty four. This option, we replace both Pond Cove and the middle school over a four year period renovations to the Cape Little. And then all through all of these, there's renovations happening to the high school to help prolong the high school's life. And there's an economy of scale by executing both projects under one town bond. And this option would require the town to support a larger bond. It would be seventy one to seventy seven million dollars for the two buildings together at the same time. Option number three is to frame off restoration and renovation of low, of existing lower and middle schools. So the temporary relocation of lower and middle school students will be required. Forty portables, which we talked about last time as being quite expensive. A temporary gym and cafeteria will be needed to provide once renovations are. On existing, the start estimated occupation would be roughly the same time, summer of twenty twenty four. Now, this is probably all going to shift a little bit, these estimated timing, because we're, we had a little pause, a six month pause in all of this. And the cost of the portables, as I mentioned above, are two million for twelve months occupancy, three million for eighteen. Eighteen months occupancy. And remember, this quote doesn't include the electricity, the heat or the IT or water. It's just for the portables. And the rental costs included in estimated bond size. So those, those costs for the portables would be included.
No, not.
Not included. You're right. Not included. Thank you. Current estimated real estate combination value of Pond Cove and Cape Elizabeth Middle School is twenty eight million dollars. That estimated bond to do those two would be fifty three to fifty eight million dollars. And then we have option four. Which is. The security and cafeteria upgrades. And this is the most basic work that we can do. It'll address the security concerns. Back when we were having all these conversations, there was a lot of talk. I'm just reminding everyone that there was a lot of talk around the entrances to buildings and potential active shooters and, and, and the fear of the entrance to our buildings not being safe enough. And so there was a lot of, this needs to be dealt with immediately. What can we do to make these buildings safer? And I just, so that's where this is coming from. And the, the whole conversation originally years ago, when I was involved with it, got started with the cafeteria. Between, you know, Pond Cove and the middle school not being effective or providing the space and the needs of, of a healthy eating experience. It, it's completely inadequate. And since then, we've learned through all of the information of other things such as the band room. For example, I know Caitlin Ramsey is here tonight, but that's just one example. So this was just, I think, going back to the original, original concerns of security and cafeteria upgrades. It'll address the security concerns of the front entrance and cafeteriums, Pond Cove Elementary and the Cape Elizabeth Middle School. Construction would take place in the summer of twenty twenty two. Not sure if that's still accurate, but this is what we knew at the time. And occupation is for fall twenty twenty three or spring twenty twenty four. The standalone cafeteria structure could remain in place should further construction occur. Meaning if we decide to redo buildings around it, we would, they, the architects and engineers did sort of do a rough outline to maintain that space that is brand new. So that wouldn't have to be redone if the rest of the building was redone later. And relocations of students would not be necessary during this project. The estimated bond size would be twenty six million to twenty nine million. So hopefully that refreshes everybody's minds. Do we want to open it to discussion at this point, Donna?
I think it would be a good idea for the principals now to talk about their smaller spaces.
Okay.
Um, just as a reminder, I think Perry. Perry. So this. Chart at the last meeting, which shows all of the new programs and requirements from nineteen hundred on and how the mandates have increased. And we need, we have come to need many spaces. One of the things that we're dealing with now is many of those small spaces where we had some speech people working and our different specialists. We've had to move them out because they were working closets and there's no ventilation. So we had to, to move those. Teachers and their students out of those spaces. So we've had to move them into either empty classrooms that have been made empty because we have, we might have a teacher who's teaching remotely. So there was a bit of moving around of people trying to find spaces for those people. So Jeff, I think you can share, I set you up to share. So why don't you share your screen and start with the high school?
Okay.
Let me talk a little bit about that.
So I just did a quick spreadsheet of some spaces that we've become aware of, particularly. Given our current situation there are, so there's two special education teacher classrooms that were essentially created during the last renovation. One of those spaces has ventilation, the other does not. So the other one currently, we've moved the function, it's now functioning as an office for an individual service provider, but it's not functioning as a classroom. There's another space which is special for a special education teacher. It does have ventilation. But it, it's essentially a former conference room space that we converted on the second floor into a, into a sort of an inner, inner special education classroom. Our school psychologist is in office off the library hallway. She's currently not working there. She actually is working from the, one of, from one of these two special education teacher classrooms, the one that doesn't have ventilation, but it's, it's bigger anyway. And she can keep the door open, but there's no ventilation in, in her office officially. We have two school social workers, neither of them right now is working. We have two school social workers, neither of them right now is working from their offices because of ventilation issues in both places. One of the offices is next to the school psychologist on the library hallway, the other one is in what used to be a storage space in the math wing. Our student-driven learning teacher is a small space, it actually does, it's in a sort of an odd-shaped space, but it's a, it's a usable space in terms of ventilation, it's being used this year. Because we didn't, we weren't able to rehire. The reconstructed student-driven learning teacher position, so it's now being used for our ELL teacher because her designated office space. Doesn't have ventilation. There's speech and language teacher who is in a. What used to be a storage space off of the library, opposite the school social worker and school psychologist spaces. And she just is in there and she's permitted to have one or two kids at most in her space. Our college counselor is in a small. Small office without windows, it's not a terrible space, it's a small office without windows. She's currently working in a location where our academic skills staff used to work. We moved the academic skills staff because they tend to work with a few more kids than a college counselor at any given time. We moved them down to a classroom of a teacher who's teaching a hundred percent remotely now. Our school resource officer works from a small office down. I, I think it used to be a storage space primarily. It's, it's just to the left as you enter the, the doors at the bottom of the amphitheater that go towards the gym and, and theater. Our OTPT space, we had to relocate that one. It had been in a, a large space, but a completely unventilated space that was originally designed for storage. So we've now temporarily put her in the, and, and some of the exercise equipment that she uses. In the teacher's lunchroom because teachers aren't allowed to use the lunchroom for lunch. Just because of social distancing issues. The ELL teacher is currently. In one of the other spaces that's been opened up because of a hundred percent remote learning teachers. She had been designated to be in a small space. That's between two science classrooms on the top floor, but because of ventilation issues there. We, we moved her to, to another location. We have been lucky, not, not, I mean unlucky in a way, lucky in another way. The fact that we do have teachers who for health reasons are teaching a hundred percent remotely has given us some flexibility to move people around away from unventilated spaces. And then I just noted the athletic department suite, which is, which has always been undersized. It's a small office for the athletic director and a small adjoining office by. The athletic administrative assistant, I mean ideally, they would definitely have more space than they do. So those are the spaces that occurred to me, Donna, and I'm happy to answer any questions that anybody has.
Thanks, Jeff. So we're just trying to show as a result of the, all of these mandates. All of the small spaces that have been added to, to, to our needs in the past several years. Troy, do you want to talk about your school?
Sure.
I think you can share.
All right. Not seeing it.
Oh, wait a minute.
It looks like it was gonna let me, but. I don't really see where it is hiding.
All right, wait, I'm gonna withdraw and then try to get you up and going again for some reason.
And I had shared it with you earlier too, so maybe you could do it too.
There we go, you should be all set.
All right, let me see here if I can do it. All right, I'm still not seeing my screen. I don't really need to share it anyways, I know what I'm talking about.
All right, I think I can show it.
Yeah. So for us, really, and I can talk about it, well, Donna's trying to, I did share it with her earlier today, it's really just basically a list. For us, I think it became really clear and evident to us that the. Schools look very different and there's a lot of needs and a lot of. Yeah, someone on the bottom there, a lot of. Specialized people in our schools now that maybe didn't exist before. And you never know when they're going to be highlighted, but for us, anything having to do with technology, our tech integrators are. I mean, schools right now would not be running, and at least my school would not be running without them and, and the incredible work they've done, so. That's one example, but what I have created down here towards the bottom. These are teachers or positions that. Require, that really our schools depend on, and they require their own spaces either to. At least have a, a place to hang their hat or ranging right up through to teaching and working with one student or a small group of students typically. So for us, we have two academic interventionists. So that each of those people really require a space and. You know, they start out in some small spaces because spaces are such a, such a premium in our, in our schools that. That space in the beginning is, is, you know, I, I wouldn't say a closet, but it's small rooms, maybe they were originally intended for storage. They may even have windows for ventilation, but there's no way you're going to get more than two kids and an adult in there and maintain a six-foot social distancing. And have proper ventilation, so we've had to move all these people around. Another example is our ELL, it's a part-time position. But nonetheless, when she is there, she needs a place to work with a small group of kids, usually up to like six. But when you keep in mind, under our current constraints, you know, the most we can have in a classroom right now is twelve. So it still takes a pretty large space. There's our tech integrator who is currently working out of, you know, it's, it's actually, he's turned it into an amazing space with the help of some grants, but. He's currently working out of the, what was originally the concession stand for the gym. So when you think about it, no windows in there, and that's just kind of a place that had, that had space. And we have a, a speech therapist that often, you know, has an office which will work for one or two kids, but any kind of small group, it has to be in a classroom now. We also have two social workers, the other thing, and they obviously need space, but really one of the biggest things we're learning this year, and one of the, I think the most taxing issues. Are, are educational technicians are required now to, they're holding, they need a quiet place to do Zoom meetings and to be reaching into homes and working with students on their off days. And we, that has been a complete struggle to find those appropriate places for them to be doing that, especially this year. We have two school counselors, one school nurse that now needs two spaces. And, you know, thanks to Perry's, you know, help, we've been able to do that, with a GT teacher that we share with Pond Cove. Which needs a space, and then we also need two conference rooms. Then we do have the outside, you know, the providers like sex, school psychologists that come in and need space, so it is a constant struggle, I think. When we have times like what we're going through right now, you realize how important all these positions are, and. You know, when, when everything's great, it sometimes is easy to overlook the, what they add to our buildings and what supports they give to our kids and families, so. I just think it's a highlight of, of how important they are, and it also demonstrates how different schools are now than they were, you know, ten, twelve, twenty years ago. So.
Thanks, Troy.
Thanks.
Jason.
Okay, not sure.
You need to make him a host, Donna, or a co-host.
Okay.
If he needs to share.
There you go.
Okay, I think, everybody see that?
Yes.
All right, well, good evening, everyone. So. What I have here is, I have two lists, actually. I was, I wanted to make sure that I could answer any questions you folks have and kind of present this in a way that. Kind of meet your needs, so in thinking about small workspaces at an elementary school. We have lots of needs at, at the elementary level for small spaces, and we. We definitely are, we struggle to find some of these spaces, particularly now in COVID, but everything that. I kind of mentioned here, I think the need for these spaces just goes beyond the pandemic. And kind of describing what we have now and what would be in an ideal. Elementary school setting to most efficiently and effectively meet the needs of students and be as flexible as possible. So this list here. Yeah, I'm gonna kind of go through it, it, it lists what we have, so you can see we have. We have, right now, you know, a little over five hundred students and. Almost eighty staff members in the building. And in terms of a, a, a combination, a copy workroom and lunch space, we have two of those. So you can see, I mean, the, the building's very, very large and it takes a long time to travel across, so. You know, so you can see already, we have two spaces where staff. Would you'd even consider a lunchroom, and now with COVID, we have on that, on that space, we have a sign that says max capacity to people. Because of COVID, so, and that has to do with the square footage of the room and the ability to distance at six feet. So you can see that it's not adequate during the pandemic, in before or after. So again, you can see some of the, the spaces we have, our tech integrator has a space. We have four RTI teachers with two spaces, so they share, which. You know, where we always, we do feel fortunate to be where we are, but it would be much more effective to not share intervention spaces when working with small children. Support intervention breakout rooms, we have three of those, so just our kindergarten wing has one room in between every two classrooms. And so we have three of those, but as you can see, when I go up to the list above, you know, an ideal setting would be, we would have fifteen of those, because every two classrooms. Would share potentially a breakout room for small group work, intervention work with RTI ed techs. Or any service provider that can efficiently pull a child out for a brief intervention and then have them right back in the mainstream again quickly. We have two school counselors, and they, they do have to each have a space now, but to make that happen, we need to displace, we needed to displace someone else, so it, it. We have two rooms for our counselors, but now someone else doesn't have a room. So speech, speech paths, we have two speech paths and they share a room, I'm not quite sure how they do it, but they just work together really well and can creatively schedule. So that only, you know, so that they are not interrupting each other during their, their speech therapy sessions. So again, not ideal there, our nurse has a spot. It's, you know, our nursing station is an internal room without a window, not ideal situation for that, that type of office space. Workspace with children, our P, our physical therapists and occupational therapists have one space and they share. So lots of, again, they still do an outstanding job and they're still very effective. It takes more effort and energy to creatively, there's lots of things going on in the hallways in terms of like PT activities, and so they have to be creative because they share a space. We have a behavior analyst who does have a space. We are gifted and talented teacher, services fourth grade, we have no space, so for that, for that. That teacher. So in the past, we have had our gifted and talented students travel to the middle school. And we've done other things where they're working creatively in common areas, kind of right outside the hallway instead of a classroom. Right now, our school psychologist technically really have no space because they were displaced. Because of COVID this year, they are evaluating in an empty classroom, so just because of the COVID situation, because we had a classroom teacher go to fully remote. We happen to have a space that they can sign in and use. But that's going to be an issue next year, we gotta think creatively to have an office and a testing space for those folks. Two social workers. And they do have spaces, we do have our English language learner. Teacher does have a pull-out space. It's not in an ideal location, has to walk through a room, someone else's room to get to her room, so kind of like funky setups a little bit, just over time, just rooms being created and added and things like that. And so I won't talk about every one of these. But you can see right now, we have approximately like twenty-three small work or office spaces, either. For teachers and staff, workrooms and for supporting students. And I'm not going to go through this all, it's very similar, but if I go up above to an ideal situation where a preferred setting to most effectively and efficiently. Service students at the school our size, there would be approximately forty-five small spaces. And that would include. You know, more copy workrooms for, so staff can efficiently plan and prep with the limited time that they have. It would include separate spaces for RTI teachers, it would include. More of these bump out rooms in between classrooms for small group work with our RTI educational technicians. And it would, it would certainly include private spaces for speech, speech paths and OT and PT. All things that we would really hope for, for our, our staff and our students. We would, our gifted and talented teacher would have a space to, so students would not be traveling so far and taking time with transitions. Our psychologists would certainly have a space to privately test students and, and keep records and, and, and hang their hat and. And so you can see it quickly, you know, I, I really see a need for more small workspaces, but we are certainly making do with what we have. The best that we can, and, and I think our staff's still doing a great job with the facility we have now, but the top, this is really, I think, ideal.
Thanks, Jason. So we just wanted to remind people, when we're talking about spaces in our schools, it's not necessarily classroom spaces, it's all of these other spaces. That we, services that we are required to offer and offer our students to support them, and we want to offer them. But they're based on mandates, so just to remind everybody. About that.
Donna, do we have any concerns around the fact that? There are probably privacy issues. I mean, are we skirting the edge here with, you know, students with health and behavioral issues being serviced? You know, the speech pathologist has to share, and you know, that sort of stuff, that feels like a concern.
It's a huge balancing act, yes. We are on the, on the edge, I know, we, we try the best we can do to provide confidentiality, certainly when students are being tested. Our teachers have to scramble around to try to find spaces. If there's something that needs to be done that's confidential, I mean, our social workers, our guidance counselors all need confidential spaces as they work with students, so. It is, it is a challenge. Any other questions or comments? Okay, now Heather. Back to the, back to the discussion about the four options, I wanted to, as we talked about those four options, I wanted to remind. Everyone about those small spaces that are so important.
I think it just lends itself to, to the fact that when we're talking about who is in the building and what we need in our buildings. The, the conversation is much greater than just enrollment, yes, enrollment, enrollment is a piece of it. But it's not that you take a certain number of students and you do add them by ten, fifteen, twenty, whatever the classroom sizes are, that there is a greater need. For a completely different size. In, in, in different spaces, and they're just utilized very differently. I also want to point out. A lot of what we've talked about in the past, and going back to what Perry said, I think you said it was twelve thousand dollars to replace that hydrant. And that was fifty years old, and that that was not in the expenses, that wasn't planned, you know, that, that was something that surprised us, and. I just remember the whack-a-mole, you know, that that's just happening more and more, and I believe Marcy had come up. You know, that that's just happening more and more. And I believe Marcy had come up um with something, I forget exactly what it is at this point, but um Marcy had been talking about how eh the projection of those surprise needs in such old buildings, how exponentially greater they will become to pull out of our pockets. Are, am I remembering this correctly? Marcy, you're shaking your head. Yes, nodding your head. Um, and 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 so that just becomes inefficient use of funds, having a call as Perry has talked about. People end in the middle of the night or on weekends when a pipe is leaking and um it it's, it's just that not an economically feasible way, best economic practice to move forward um in this, in this way. Um, I I I feel like this and well. I'm not going to go ahead with my opinions right now. I want to open uh to questions, but I did want to point those few things out as part of the discussion. Um, I think it's time to open it up for a little bit with the intention. We have about forty-five minutes left. I think the intention is to see if there is an option that as a group, we feel like we can narrow it down. And I think we also would like to talk about next steps. Um, maybe I will talk um Elizabeth and Donna at this point about what our whole deadline hope is. Does that sound just to give us a timeframe? Um, we're kind of hoping to have this, this committee charge is um to bring a recommendation for a plan to the board. Um, it is not to figure out the finances of it. It is not to um not to get into the nitty gritties of it, but to then bring it to the board and let the board um then decide. In order to do that, we would love to have um a recommendation put forward uh hopefully by December, the, you know, so that when we start to head into our budget season. Um, we can move in that direction. We've had a lot of information. We have had a lot of meetings to talk about this. I know we need to sort of recharge and remember and come back together, but I felt like we were um making great progress in the conversation. Um, and just know that um we don't want this going on and on and on. I mean, there's time, it's it's getting to be time to act and make that recommendation. So that being said. Um, I'll try to notice your hands if you raise them like so, but the easiest thing is if you raise your hand, your virtual hand. Um, if you have a comment or a question that maybe we can answer. Terry, you can unmute yourself.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah, I I think my recommendation, I'm not looking at that ch- chart right now with the options one through four, but number four was kind of the keep replacing the tires on the car, keep roofing the building option, right? It was the security enhancements to all the schools uh without kind of bigger picture macro level changes to the buildings, correct?
Yes.
Yeah, I, in my opinion, I think that one should be off the table. I think we've been doing that for decades. And we're where we are because of it.
Thanks, Terry. Um. Why don't we talk about option four right now? Um, and see if others have a thought around that. People are, if people are in agreement with that commentary, if you want to put your hand back down, your virtual hand, and I won't call on you again. Um. And um let's see if there's consensus that that is not enough, that as a, as a committee, we feel like that is not. Here come the hands. That should be taken off the table. I'm gonna invite Jen McVay first and then John Volt. If you want to unmute yourself. There you go, Jen.
Jen McVay, Evan Brentwood. And I'm inclined to agree with Terry that at this point, I think option four should be off the table as well. We've been doing that for far too long.
Okay. Uh, thank you for that. Um, if you want to put your hand back down, John, you could speak. You could unmute yourself.
There you go. I was gonna concur. I I think that the the idea of, I think the pandemic showed us um somewhere we are weak. And there are probably other places in our infrastructure that we don't even know about yet. As Colby and company talked about when they went around and sort of did the walkthrough, they haven't opened up any of the walls or doors or things yet. And there could be mu- mu- many more things. And I think the idea is like, these are ending uh buildings are getting to the end of their useful life. We've already seen um when we're sort of running on those, those uh close to bald tires, that those could have real impacts. And so I I I think option four is is just got to be off the table. It's just, it's like the eh even knowing what we know and knowing that there's probably more we don't know.
Okay. Um, thank you for that, John. Uh, I'm noticing that some people are not sure how to raise their virtual hand. Um. Hope's true. If you see participants, there should be on the sidebar, you should be able to raise your hand through participants. Thank you for writing that in, Hope. Um, Nicole voucher, sorry if I'm pronouncing your name wrong. You can go ahead and unmute yourself and then Susannah Mazel Hubs.
Hey, it's Boucher. I'm at Fourteen River Road. Um, it's totally okay. Um, so I agree with option four. I was actually messaging a friend like uh twenty minutes ago saying, I don't understand option four. And I think from a you know, the other reasons people said, but also for the the risk and the amount for property owners to be paying this. We know that there's going to be a cost to the schools and to ask everyone in town to, you know, put twenty million dollars in. And like John said, you open the walls trying to make, you know, less entrances. And then you find another host of problems. And then twenty million becomes twenty-five million. And then you're sitting with this bill that's pretty close to what a a new facility, which would solve a lot of needs of the schools would be. So I just think it it's irresponsible to spend taxpayer money on option, option four.
Okay, thank you, Nicole. Susanna?
Hi, yeah, I'm sorry. I don't see the option to raise my hand. So thank you for answering me. Um. I agree. I think option four is uh irresponsible. I'd like to know the difference aside from the added cost of uh portables, what's the difference between two and three? But before you answer that, I I think that, you know, looking at South Portland, what they did, you know, the there's a, there's a, just a, just a, you guys, shh, shh. Um, I think, I think there's a need to take the pulse of the town, you know, and I would say go, go for the most economically beneficial option to me, which is number two, and um and see what the town is willing to support. South Portland, I don't, I don't want to have a rejected bond. I don't. But I have a feeling the town is going to support option two. That's what I think. So if someone can a- answer the difference between two and three beside the added cost, because what is shown in option three, um you know, I'm not sure what the difference is. So that's all I want to say.
I wonder if James is here. I think you can probably speak the most accurately about it. Are you still with us, James?
I am. Uh, thank you, Heather, and thank you for the question, Susanna. The difference between options two and three is option two is a replacement of the existing lower school and middle school building over the course of four years. And it's broken down into two phases where we would systematic eh be a systematic replacement of the existing buildings. And you would get a brand new building as your end result. The option three is a frame-off restoration and renovation of the existing lower and middle school buildings, where essentially you would take uh the existing buildings all the way down to their stud. Um, you would rip all the walls out, you would remove the flooring, you would remove all of the infrastr- all of the structure and ba- or you would leave just the structure, basically. Um, all, basically all of the um structural I-beams and framing of the building. And you would basically start from scratch. Imagine a complete gut and renovation of um say a ho- one of the homes in the Eastern Promenade in Portland that they've been doing the last few years. This would require um, this would require a extensive portable facilities. And that's why a lot of the costs here, you'll see the cost for portables, two million for twelve months, three million for eighteen months. Um, it doesn't include electricity, heat, IT, or water to these portable classrooms that students would have to be in during this time. Whereas where the option two, um, there there believe that there is enough sufficient space to put a new building there while still phasing students within the existing building so that you wouldn't have to have portables out in the fields. Uh, and one just brief comment I'll add um with with option four, the reason why we put this one in here was because it was one of the original options that we had pre- presented in April of twenty eighteen. Um, so uh it is certainly uh eh given the the situation with the last six to seven months, I don't think option four would really be a appropriate uh for consideration. Um, but we felt because we had done the work and the questions were asked initially when we were hired um addressing security and cafeteria concerns at the lower and middle school, we wanted just to have that in there. And I'm here to answer any questions from regarding the technical aspect of any of this stuff. Otherwise, I'll be silent.
Thank you, James. I I I don't know. I guess I couldn't read too too carefully the um difference between two and three. So that, you know, that being said, um, I feel like the cost difference between a brand, two brand-new buildings and two renovated buildings we might be equal or close to equal after you add in the added cost of um portables and the other costs associated with running a portable. So my, my vote is two. Thank you.
Um, okay, John Volt, your hand, is that up from before still? Okay. Um, and Nicole, I think your hand might be up from before, but I see Cindy Volt. I'm gonna call on Cindy.
Hi, I want to agree that yes, four should be off the table. And with option three, I even have a concern um about the welfare of the students and the disruption to the students to have to move them to portables and have this uncertainty during the construction. I think um options one and two definitely would provide the least disruption to the students during the process. Um, and definitely, you know, my support would be for uh option two as well, um in part because, you know, the occupation for both schools is complete by twenty twenty-four and is least disruptive to the existing students.
Thank you, Cindy. Um, Derek, you can unmute yourself.
All right, thank you. Um, I'm just gonna reiterate what everybody's been talking about. I from my mind, obviously, option four, I think should just be off the table. I think option three should not really be considered either. Essentially trying to reuse the structure, you're trying to, it seems like you're trying to save pennies and spending dollars to do it. My opinion, I'd prefer option one or two. I like the idea of option one given kind of the uncertainty we're talking about with the um projections in the population. Um, that, you know, if you build it and then you have a few years till you get to the next bond. Um, but also, I think when we talked with Matt Sturgis, he had talked about the bonding capacity of the town. Obviously, we can do a lot. Um, but by phasing it, you could certainly bond future phases after you paid down some of the debt for the first project, for example. So um, the downside to that is it will cost more money to do both phases. Uh, there's no doubt about that. So doing both at the same time, kind of ripping the Band-Aid off would be less expensive than going with option one. So I'm, I'm a fan of either option one or two. Thank you.
Thank you, Derek. Are there any other comments? John has his hand raised again. John Volt?
Just briefly, um, comment with respect to option one and option two. I I I find them both appealing. I do have a concern about option one, that you're in in a sense, in a sense, building half a bridge eh for more money. So I I do have that concern. Um, but I think they're both quite viable and and would need my more information to have them fleshed out to really understand what the trade-offs are.
Okay. Uh, so I just, um, yeah, Tim, I'm gonna let Tim Thompson speak up in a moment. Um, I just wanna we don't, I I appreciate everybody's uh input on which ones they like and um we don't have to make the decision tonight. Uh, we can have another meeting. For example, we could get down to one and two and tease that out. And it's sounding like option four and maybe even option three might go off the table. So I would love to focus on what we can maybe get rid of. And then in it perhaps in an upcoming meeting, sort of tease out between two others, if we can sort of keep that in our thinking. Um, so go ahead, Tim Thompson, just for time's sake. You can unmute yourself, Tim, and you can have the floor.
Can you hear me now?
I can.
Okay, so I'm gonna keep this, the the four options open. I don't think I can keep that open and abuse my video, but the uh my, my question keeps coming back to what we can afford. And and when I hear people wanting to take option three off, because there's, it's like, I think somebody said it was pennies different than option one and option two, it's twenty million dollars different. You know, so if if we can get two of our buildings, taking them down, I think James mentioned, it's like somebody renovating a a beautiful building downtown, taking it down to the studs and getting us a couple of nice buildings. And the downside is we got to use portables for a period of time, but it's twenty million dollars. If if I'm looking at this right, it's somewhere between fifty-three and fifty-eight as opposed to seventy-one to seventy-seven. That's not pennies. And again, we do have to come up with a project we're going to be able to afford as a town. I don't know if anything's in looking at the video of our last meeting, you know, I I brought the point up and I hate to be bringing it up again tonight, but it's something that you know, based on the feedback from to our town manager, what can we afford um as a town to borrow? Um, and whether we do it in a phase like phase one and phase two um and spread that over a ten-year period of time to make it affordable. I just, I I I I guess I need some more information as to how how we're gonna be able to borrow seventy-seven million dollars. And now, I don't know if Derek's on the call tonight or not, but I'm wondering if he could give us also some input based on on the pandemic, the cost of materials has increased so significantly. Could we get some kind of an update on this, these estimates? Because from what I understand, just the two by, the cost of a two-by-fours is is a lot more expensive than it was six months ago.
Yeah, um, thank you, Tim. I I'm gonna call on Elizabeth Cyphres. I, go ahead.
Thanks. So I'm gonna stick to the conversation at hand for the moment, which is just around um option four. I believe it should be off the table. I think it would be incredibly irresponsible and a very poor choice and a very poor use of money to keep option four. And um because I take notes and I'm a careful listener, I just need to correct Mr. Thompson, who I do respect deeply. Um, the speaker said that we would be saving pennies by spending a lot of dollars, not that it was a pennies difference in doing option three. We would be essentially spending a lot of money to save a little. And then if you look at portables, but um I just wanted to clear that up. So I wanted to be careful about what people were saying.
Thank you for that. Um, the other thing that I just want to clarify um about how much we can borrow, and I don't have the information specifically in front of me, but um we have the capacity to borrow this much money. Somebody, please, a board member who's been involved in this, if if you want to speak up and help out with this. We have the ability to to um to borrow more money. If we wanted to keep our A-plus rating, that number is much smaller, but we are capable of going down to an A-minus rating or a B-plus rating and borrow the money needed to do these. So it is possible. I'm seeing Elizabeth shake her head, our finance chair. Do you have anything to add to that to clarify what I said, or did that explain it?
I really don't. I feel like, you know, outside of this meeting, because that's really not the purpose of our meeting, as you just said. I, you know, we we can get some advice, especially around, you know, phasing and that sort of thing and having um, you know, kind of an an impact that would be the most palatable, palatable as possible to the town. But um, we are historically incredibly under-leveraged. And so maintaining an A-plus rating is not necessarily the goal of of this committee and nor should it necessarily be the goal of the town if we are not you know, if we don't have the facilities that we need.
Um, okay, so I would like to, um,
Marion has her hand up.
Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead, Marion.
Thank you. I couldn't find the raise your hand button. Um, just a couple of points I wanted to make. Option three, the difference between a new building and renovating the existing buildings. I think one factor that we need to really think about is the environmental responsibility. It's not just the 20 million, uh, difference in price, but also there's a growing recognition nationally that renovation is almost always more environmentally responsible than putting, uh, the building materials of an old building into a landfill. So I would hate to see us, eliminate option three, because it may well be the most environmental, most environmentally responsible way to go, going forward. And, and I would just add, I agree with Tim Thompson, that $20 million is not an insignificant amount of money, particularly when you, I recall that the town manager last December talked about the borrowing capacity, and I realize there's a limit by, uh, state law. But that limit is ridiculously, uh, large and you would never borrow at that limit. I think that ultimately, my guess is the town council is going to want to look carefully at what the manager and what Moody's and others say is the reasonable place to be. So I, um, would not at this point be, uh, shrugging off a $20 million difference in, um, the cost of a project. But I, but again, more importantly, I think, uh, option number three is perhaps the most environmentally responsible option for this town.
Okay, thank you. I see, thank you. Um, I see Phil Sossier and then Hope Strawn and DJ Nelson, please. Can I just stop for one second and, and speak to the chat box? Um, I do see that there's some conversation happening in it. I cannot really take the time and focus and listen to what's happening with people. If we were all together, we wouldn't have a chat box on the side. So I would really appreciate it for e- for everybody's sake. If you have something that you want to be typing into the chat box, if you maybe share it with everybody or, um, you know, that is, so that some don't receive the information and others don't. I, I get it when, um, somebody is sharing a link, um, that would be great. So please speak instead of chat. Thank you. Uh, so then Phil, Hope, and then DJ. Go ahead, Phil.
Yeah, thank you. I'm just, I just wanted to weigh in on the option four, which I think, um, should not be considered going forward. I think it's irresponsible. I agree with everyone speaking till now. I would, I was just going to make the suggestion that, I mean, given the timing tonight, and it has been a number of months since we've all revisited this, that, um, you know, I'd like us to see us, uh, there's a lot more discussion I can see that needs to be had on options one, two, and even three. I have an opinion about that, but I don't think we have the time to decide those three tonight, and I'd like to carry those on to another meeting. But I, I think we can, and maybe we need to even vote, but I think we could take option four off the table. It's not sufficient. It doesn't address any of the needs our administrators and our, and our principals have, have spoken about. And it's too much money. I mean, that's what I keep on coming back to. It's too much money. Um, it's, um, it's up to $29 million, um, for something that doesn't address anything really, um, other than two, two items. So that's where I am on that. And then I would, I, I have a lot to say about the money and the debt, um, but I think I'm going to, I'm going to pause because that's not, I think, for us tonight, or even maybe for this committee. Um, it will be a discussion, um, going forward. That's it for now. Thanks.
Thanks, Phil. Hope, go ahead.
Hi, um, so sort of, uh, similar to what Phil was saying, uh, as a, as a school board member, I feel like we're here to, to listen to the committee, so I don't want to express an opinion specifically, but I think we're not here, uh, we're not the finance experts. It's up to the town council to make, you know, the ultimate decision about the bonding. Um, we're not, you know, we didn't can, we, we paid for an enrollment study. We have the information, but it's not, it's not sort of the gating factor as to what we do. As a committee, we're, we're parents, we're teachers, we're administrators, we're town people, and we're looking at, I think we have, uh, the information we need to look at these four options and say, like Phil said, I think we could probably eliminate one tonight if we voted. It could be very simple. Um, and then it's up to us to say, you know, maybe we need one other, one other meeting to, to go through the remaining options, but I really want us to try to avoid, you know, we, we keep going down these sort of different paths of details that aren't really the, what's before us. As a committee, what's before us is option one, two, three, or four, and then, and then move on from there.
Thank you, Hope. Uh, DJ?
Uh, I may be saying more of the same, but I, you know, I, I do agree that I would, I would think that option four could come off the list and a future meeting could focus on, on the three remaining options. And I, you know, I don't really, it's hard to separate the finance, uh, component from the reality of, of, you know, 70 mil- up to 70 million versus 50 million. Or, you know, the, it's hard to sort of separate that and say, this is a recommendation. Um, I, I do think, you know, for future consideration, if we were to look at these three, uh, understanding more about the environmental impacts. And I, and I'd say, you know, new construction does afford you some, uh, ability to have a higher level of environmental, uh, components, uh, you know, that go into a building. I also agree that, you know, removing, uh, materials and, and potentially, uh, you know, putting them in a landfill has a different type of environmental impact. But I think if that's a discussion, and that's certainly one of the, the goals here, it's to be environmentally friendly, that I think we should have, you know, more discussion about that. And then my last comment is, one other, you know, if by renovation, um, renovation can have a, a certain set of benefits. But I think, again, separating, uh, operating costs is another factor here where, uh, a, a renovation may make a building, uh, less environmentally friendly in, in the new, you know, what you put back into it than a new construction might. And then, and there's, you know, operating cost to go along with that, that again, go back into the finance. It's just hard to be able to separate, uh, both of those without, um, without having more information on some operations and what really would be the environmental conditions.
Thank you, DJ. Uh, Cindy Volt has her hand up. Is this a new comment, Cindy?
Yes, I did have one other comment I wanted to make about option three. I realized these options were put together pre-pandemic and, um, the use of the portables in our current climate and, you know, even in the upcoming years, could potentially be a consideration. So if looking into option three, I think we'd want to, to look into the safety of usage of portables as a temporary classroom, particularly after we're investing. We know we're investing now in the short term in the ventilation in our existing buildings. So to move students out of them in the short term for renovations into portables, we're kind of canceling out some of that investment we're making in ventilation today.
Thank you, Cindy. I'm not seeing other people want to comment. I, I think, I think it's okay to talk about option four and the possibility of deleting. I'm not sure, Donna, unless you can figure something else out, how to vote with everybody here, because it's kind of, um, I guess you could just raise your hand.
Show of hands.
Yeah, um, I know some people had a hard time showing their hands. Um, so I'm going to sort of pose out there to scratch and take off option four. So if you agree with that, I'm, okay, I see in some hands, I'm seeing administrators not participate and my, um, so I guess I'd love to ask administrators, wait, can we pause for a second? I feel like administrators may not be speaking up to either side, because I've had conversations and I've heard administrators say in the past that, um, it's hard to weigh in one way or the other when it's taxpayers and Cape Elizabeth, their money. So I guess I just would like to know, um, to the administrators here, if you do plan to vote or not. I, I don't mean to put you on the spot. I, I just don't want to make, I just don't want to assume you're one way or not raising of the hand or not. So does that make sense? And I, I think it's completely, okay. Yeah. So Peter's saying no, and, and I think it's completely reasonable and I can understand that. I see Jason shaking his head no. Troy's saying no. I'm not sure where Jeff lies.
I mean, I'm, I'm happy to-
Again,
Jeff is a, is a taxpayer, so he might want to vote.
So you're going to plan to vote?
Well, I'm happy to say what I think, but I just, I've never viewed myself as a member of this committee. I've always thought that I'm a information provider and not a member of the committee. If, I don't, that's, that was my understanding of my status in this group. And I'm, and I'm very comfortable with that status.
Okay, so in that sense, you probably won't vote then, with that status. Okay. All right. So I just wanted to be clear from my perspective on that. Let's go back and, and try this again.
Heather, may I interrupt really quickly?
Yes.
There's a voting opportunity. If you click on participants, the same way you would raise your hand, there's a yes, there's a no.
Oh, yes, I see that.
I don't know if that would be just easier for you.
Yeah, yeah.
Does everybody see if you click on participants, you can press yes, like Erin Taylor just did. Thank you, Erin. Oh, I see more, I see more, I see more.
It's over on the right, the yes and no box. Under the guests, but under the, um, participants' names that come up when you click participants, it says yes or no.
And so I know that some people might be having a hard time based on their device, so I'll give you a chance to speak up.
So Heather, can you ask the question again?
The question is if you are in gre- in agreement of taking off option four as an option. Um, and then if there, so that means we would just go down to option one, two, and three. Is there anybody who has not weighed in to vote because they can't find the yes, no? And if that's the case and you want to speak up, speak up right now. I want to make sure that technology is not getting in the way. Okay, so I see one, two, oh, James is not voting. Two. Okay, so it is not unanimous, but it is pretty, uh, across the board to take off number three as an option.
Number four.
Uh, I'm sorry. Thank you, thank you. Sorry. So I think we will do that. So we've narrowed it down to option one, two, and three. Um, and we have a little bit of time left. I agree. I think that there, there's not enough time to even come close to having the appropriate discussion for option three. What we need to do is come up with next steps.
So what, what would people need in order for this discussion to have on one, two, and three?
Yeah.
Can we talk about that?
May I ask if Kobe Company could in, um, so on option three, they give an estimate of 53 to 58, but then there are all these asterisks that saying it doesn't include the cost of portables. It doesn't include the cost of this and that. Is there a way? Because as we, as we start talking about this, some people are, I mean, we're some, we're all going to be somewhat driven by cost rather, you know, there are lots of other considerations, but there needs to be a way to do a better comparison, if you know what I mean, because it, it seems like, you know, it looks like it's a $20 million difference when it probably really isn't. And so I, there, is there a way to get all those asterisks into the estimate?
Go ahead, James. Absolutely.
So to, to answer your question, uh, straightforward as I can, no. Because there are very uncontrolled variables that we really can't track at this point. What we've used to base our costs on for, um, portable rentals are past recent jobs that we've had and are trying to, no, um, no rental company that we spoke to will give us a cost for what is going to be three years from now. Um, we, we use this construction escalation. And Derek, uh, your, your cost estimated with Zach, or you could probably speak to this better than I can, but what we're doing is we use a lot of predicting factors to anticipate what costs are going to be in the future. And especially with, I'll say how tur- not necessarily turbulent, but how busy the economy was leading all the way up through COVID and even continuing beyond. Um, just construction in general has just been very, very rapid. Uh, and the cost of material as well as the cost of labor itself, just to try and find qualified workers has been very, um, it's been very challenging last year or so. And the cost for, um, the portables, um, the temporary structure, I believe that cost was captured in that 58 million or 59 billion that was in the, uh, option three. When that slide was up, uh, previously. The, the challenge is with, uh, with option three is that you have, um, you're still maintaining, I'll say inefficient, an inefficient building. Um, it's a, it's a, it was a building that was built in the 30s that has been constructed on all the, has been added on to since then, all the way until the 2000s where your elements are attacking each side of the building. It's also attacking from underneath into your slab. And when you have that thin of a slab, you can't necessarily replace that. I know that wasn't directly answering your question, but I wanted just to throw that, that piece out there as far as just, you can replace mostly everything, but you can necessarily replace, um, the slab of your, of your building. Does that answer your question?
It doesn't, that, but is something that I would definitely ask about next time. We'll have to, we'll just have to remember that and we'll look at the slide again, because I didn't think that the cost of portables was a part of it. I'm pretty sure it was one of the asterisks that said it wasn't, along with, you know, electricity and water and heat and all the other stuff. And I, I just feel like when we're having this conversation, I think it's going to be really important to not make inaccurate comparisons.
You, you're absolutely right. Um, and I'll say that you are correct, yes, uh, the asterisks regarding IT, water, heating, electricity, all to those portables. That is not calculated because it's not possible to be calculated at this point. What we did include was the general cost to rent the portables. That was that two or three, two and $3 million figure you saw there.
So it does say rental costs not included in estimated bond size.
For rental costs of the portables, um, we're estimating that between two and three million, whether that, I'll say whether that is included or not included. That's why we're providing the range of the fifth, the mid 50s to high 50s on this. It's a very, it's a very wide-